Good evening. It is October 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting the Lansing City Council to order and ask that the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood. We have a quorum.
Please, members note that Councilmember Wood has requested an excused absence. We'll deal with that at the end of the meeting. Before we begin our agenda, though, I do want to remind everybody, face coverings are required by all city council members, city officials and staff, as well as members of the public at city council meetings. And just as a friendly reminder, the human respiratory system does have three outlets and inlets on the face, and the mask should cover all three of them. Thank you very much for that accommodation. We are up next to our meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anybody on council or the clerk's office wishing to recognize someone from our community this evening in our moment of meditation? Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I'd like to, someone that many of you are familiar with is Mary Reynolds, passed away Saturday. You know, she's a longtime volunteer with the clerk's office and citizen advocate as she's come to council meetings and that, and she'd be duly missed.
Thank you for that. That is sad news. She was a regular attendee at the meetings and also a regular maker of phone calls to all of us, I'm sure, so we will miss Mary quite a bit. Thank you. Anyone else from the council? All right, please join me in a moment of meditation, and we'll keep Mary Reynolds and her family in our thoughts.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on, and next I just want to note two, we have several appointments. Those will take place after our special ceremonies without objection from the council. And also, there is one other special ceremony from the mayor's office recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. So just make those notes to your agenda, and we will move on. Mr. Clerk?
All right, so we're into approval of printed council minutes for September 13th.
We have both sets from September, or just September 13th. Mr. Vice President?
Sure, so I would move the printed council proceedings for September 13th as printed.
There is a proper motion. Any discussion on the proceedings? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, we're next into special ceremonies and presentations.
First up, I will pass the gavel to our vice president as we celebrate the NAACP, and I will invite up our representatives from the NAACP. I know we have Dale Kopage, Brenda Henderson, and Fonda Brewer, as well as a few others, I think, joined us since I took role. I'll have them introduce themselves down at the dais. Well, welcome. It's so good to see all of you in person. I know this year you're celebrating your 55th Annual Freedom Fund Celebration, as well as your first virtual event. That's correct. So the title this year, Passion Led Us Here: Our Passion, Our Call, Our Action, will take place on Saturday, October 16th. We do have a resolution recognizing the 55th Freedom Fund Celebration. I'll read it in part. "But in 1919, the Lansing branch of the NAACP was chartered under the leadership of Mr. C.A. Campbell, who fought diligently to enforce civil rights laws for the community, and for over 100 years, the NAACP has led the movement on social rights and equality. NAACP works at the local, state, and national levels to ensure political, educational, social, and economic equality of all citizens, and to eliminate and remove all barriers of racial discrimination. This year, our branch is pleased to welcome speakers, including attorney, author, and CNN contributing speaker, as well as former South Carolina State Representative Bakari Sellers, and our own Michigan Lieutenant Governor Garland Gailcress. This will be the first ever event where you're holding a virtual, so we all look forward to participating virtually, but it will offer an opportunity for the community to open, to come together in support of the NAACP Lansing branch and share in the celebration. The effort put forth through the NAACP Lansing branch has made it vast strides in integrating the Lansing community. And therefore, be it resolved by the Lansing City Council, we hereby acknowledge the Lansing branch of the National Association of the Advancement of Colored People on its 55th Annual Freedom Fund Celebration and first virtual event dinner, and expresses our admiration and gratitude to its members for their achievements and commitment to the city of Lansing and its residents. We applaud the NAACP Lansing branch for many years of success and diligence in the fight for equality and anticipate many more to come." And before I move this resolution, I want to say it was drafted by Councilmember Wood, a longtime Silver Lifetime member of the Lansing branch of the NAACP, and she told me to make sure that everybody, including all elected officials, ensure that their membership in the Lansing branch of the NAACP is up to date. I assure you, mine is, so if yours isn't, make sure you do it by Saturday. But, Mr. Vice President, I would move the resolution.
Sure, thanks so much. There is a resolution on the floor for further discussion? Seeing any hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Passes.
Motion carries. So I would like to invite each of you, if you wish to say something, to speak, but we do have a good copy there that I didn't write all over.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate receiving this resolution on behalf of the NAACP concerning our virtual event. We are sure it's going to be an excellent program on the 16th at 8:00 PM on WLNS. So we're looking forward to everyone to become a member of NAACP if you like. You can go on our website. I'll let Fonda give a little more information concerning not only the program, but also our website and the information that we have present on it.
Thank you, city council, and the mayor, and everyone here for your support. You all have continued to support us for years, so it's an honor to be here. And I am the chair for this year's 55th Freedom Fund Event, and with me today I have Dr. Lee June, and I have Brenda Henderson, that are members of our organization. Brenda is on the committee, and we've worked very hard to try to bring a really good program for all of you, so you gotta watch it, okay? It's Saturday night, it's like a date night, at 8:00 PM on Channel 6, and there will be encore dates. If you go to our website, NAACP Lansing dot org, you can find out about the additional encore dates, and you can always donate so that we can continue the social justice work that we've been doing for years, and over 100 years here in the city of Lansing. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you for being here, and good luck Saturday.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Yes. Next, I will invite Mayor Shore to the well for a special presentation on Indigenous Peoples' Day. Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I will say that my membership is up to date in the NAACP. Is there anybody here from, there we go, come on, can I invite them up?
Absolutely.
Yes, please come forward. So, as you all know, while people are making their way forward, today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I know the governor issued a proclamation this morning, and it is my proud honor to be able to do the same today. So I'm going to welcome you up, and then I'll have you introduce yourselves when I'm done, but I will say, for those in our viewing audience who don't know, today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was first created in, I believe, 1977 by leaders around the world who organized because they wanted to promote the indigenous sovereignty and self-determination of the folks here. In Michigan, we have three main tribes, the Chipewa, or the Ojibwe, I might butcher these, I apologize, the Ottawa, or the Odawa, and the Potawatomi. Potawatomi, thank you. I get it wrong every time, but thank you very much. And they are the three major tribes here in Michigan. We want to recognize their historic, cultural, and contemporary significance of the indigenous peoples and their lands that became known as the Americas that we know, and we want to make sure that we honor their everything, really. The proclamation says their labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that has shaped the character of our city. So I want to present this to you, and then if you will introduce yourselves, that would be wonderful. So I'm going to give this to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here today. My name is Becky Roy, and on behalf of all First Nations people from the Three Fires that are indigenous to this area in the Great Lakes area, I accept this humbly, and I'm excited to be here today and have this day recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
Ani, my name is Steven Sosha. I'm a member of the Little Traverse Bay Bands of Odawa Indians, and I just also want to further that and just say thank you for the opportunity to be here, for the proclamation. I'm a high school teacher. I know I've certainly used today to share with my students more about our heritage and culture, and I'm just hoping that this continues to be an opportunity to further the conversation, the relationship, and the understanding between our peoples. McGwetch.
My name's Jordy Roy. I'm Becky's husband, and I'm just honored to be here to support her and our people in this day, and it's just been a glad to be here. It's a long time coming, even though it's been going on for a while, but to get this day as an official matter means a lot to us.
I'd also like to recognize on my staff Debbie DeLeon, who I know you all know, who has been, just in my lifetime, has been a tremendous advocate for the indigenous people, for the Latinx community, and just a variety of others. So I did forget to say, I'm going to read the bottom, that now therefore I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the city of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2021, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Lansing. I urge all citizens to recognize and reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people and the many contributions they have made to our city, state, and country. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, next we are to comments by council member and the city clerk.
Any council members wishing to make comments? Councilmember Spitzley, followed by Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor Shore, for both of the proclamations, but for the indigenous people. I really appreciate that. I want to just have, I have three announcements. So last, you know, we've been, we haven't met for a while, and so I wanted to let you know, last week, Geronimo Lerma was named the 2020 Nonprofit of the Year for Footprints of Michigan, and if anybody knows Geronimo and his work with Footprints of Michigan, it's just been absolutely wonderful. He travels the state, making sure that the least of us have safe, clean shoes and socks, and he's just built this nonprofit into just an amazing force and work. If you didn't know, he also had COVID, and he was in the hospital for a while, and he had been waiting for a kidney. He needed a kidney transplant, and then because of the COVID, his kidneys have failed. And it's been on Facebook, so I'm not violating any HIPAA regs, but, so it's been a challenge. He's on dialysis, but I did want to congratulate him on the achievement of the 2020 Greater Lansing Entrepreneurial Awards awarded him the 2020 Nonprofit of the Year for Footprints of Michigan. Footprints has also started their campaign of Boots on the Playground, and we all know that there are some children that don't have warm boots and footwear for the wintertime, and so October 11th through November 11th, they'll be accepting donations and funding for, to purchase boots for children, and it's called Boots on the Playground. So you can send donations to Footprints of Michigan, 3300 West Main Street, Lansing, Michigan, 48917. I also wanted to mention that the Women's Center of Greater Lansing on Wednesday, October 27th, I won't be here, that's why, I'm on council for the 25th, that's why I'm mentioning this, they will have an afternoon of activity where women can come and get makeovers, be pampered. It's a treat yourself versus a trick-or-treat. It's a treat yourself event, and that's at the Women's Center of Greater Lansing on Wednesday, October 27th, from 3:00 to 6:00. They're going to have makeup artists, they're going to have photos, they're going to have goodie bags, and this is all for women to come and give themselves a treat. And finally, this Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00, the Healing Hearts Project will be having another gathering at 505 Seymour Avenue. Healing Hearts Project was created to provide support and services to those who have been impacted by violence, and so they're having their event, and it is just a fellowship event this Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 at 505 Seymour Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Vice President Hussein?
Sure, I want to first thank publicly Brady Hawkins, I believe is how you say his last name. He is the Tuesday Toolman Manager, along with the Tuesday Toolman, Raleigh Van Fossen with the Capitol Housing Partnership, and of course, our own Delisa Fontaine, who always does fantastic work when we talk about citizens in neighborhoods needing some type of support. We had, in the Third Ward, we had a senior reach out who had a pretty severe issue in her yard, some invasive type stuff, and really needed help. She understood that it was her responsibility, but she simply did not have the capacity to take care of it. So I did reach out to Delisa, I reached out to Raleigh, they sprung into action, and Brady and his guys just did a great job. So the things they do, you know, they're kind of the unsung heroes in our community, and I think it's important to sometimes publicly thank them for what they do. I also want to thank Mr. Peflee, Ms. Williams, along with Mr. Kelvin Jones with Lansing Border Water. Like, we had recently just an inordinate number of streetlights that were out in southwest Lansing, particularly along some of our major corridors, and it was really causing some duress for drivers and things of that nature. Certainly followed the appropriate pathway, putting things in the Lansing Connect, but then I went direct, and they, again, when we talk about springing into action, they did it very quickly, and they understood that it was really a public emergency of sorts, and I want to thank them publicly as well for their work. Also, good news, we have been talking a lot about the art project that is at the southwest corner of Pleasant Grove and Homes, and what we call now the southwest town square. And as folks know, we have a beautiful piece of art there, incredibly beautiful. It is really the product of a lot of public input, and it consists of four different panels, and those panels really have always been meant to reflect the rich diversity of southwest Lansing, right? That rich diversity that we've all fallen in love with, the reason why I've been there all 40 years of my life. In any event, three of, after a ton of public input, three of the panels came out exactly how the community had kind of envisioned, and one, not so much. And so there were some concerns about that one panel. To be honest with you, very impressive to see Brett Krasinski with the Parks Department, Delisa Fontaine, Southwest Action Group, the artist, everybody came together, understanding just how concerning some of the concerns were that came from the community. There were some logistical issues with kind of, I don't want to say repurposing, but really kind of reimagining that panel and then using the existing panel to change it to what the community had actually asked for in the first place, and then there were some financial hurdles that we had to get, you know, kind of over. But those issues have been addressed. The panel is actually done, we're awaiting delivery, and we are finally going to have what is a long-awaited, but very, I think, one of the most appropriate maybe ribbon cuttings that we've seen in quite some time. And so we have a ribbon cutting that is now set, and if I'm wrong, Mayor, please correct me, but I believe it's October 21st at 3:00 PM, and that again is at Pleasant Grove and Homes. So we invite you all to come out, particularly those people that were part of the imagining, people that were, you know, kind of part of bringing that to Pleasant Grove and Homes, because it's just incredibly important that you guys are there. And then I have just a couple of things for the mayor. I would like you, if possible, to address, we're getting a lot of questions regarding code, regarding premise, and we, you know, I understand it right now that with regards to code, and when we talk about code compliance, obviously, they do a number of things, but that rental piece, in terms of the actual, the registration piece, that obviously accompanies an inspection, it's so incredibly important just to ensure safe, appropriate housing, particularly for some of our most economically disadvantaged neighbors. In any event, my understanding is we've had two code-offer premise inspectors working out of class, one since I think November 2020, another since July, I think, of 2021. And then we also, although we're funded for four premise inspectors, because we have those two guys working out of class, we had two premise inspectors for quite some time, and now we're down to one. My understanding is that one of our premise inspectors took a position with maybe the Flint Fire Department. In any event, that means that we now have one premise inspector for the entire city, we're down to one, for the entire city of Lansing. And so, so my question is, what are we doing to post those positions? What are we doing to hire? It's simply not fair to the two people, I think, that have been working out of class, now one for almost, what, two years? And then it's also not, obviously, I think, fair to that premise inspector, but more importantly, the taxpayers of the city. So what's the holdup if you could address that? And then it seems like we're full steam ahead on working to hire a permanent police chief. So I'm just curious again, and I've asked you before, where are we at with the fire chief timeline? So if you could address those two issues later on, I'd appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Any others? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, I have some comments to give an update on the election. On behalf of City Clerk Chris Swope, like, provide an update on the general election. Every voter has the option to select the voting method that works best for them, voting at home, voting on November 2nd at your precinct, and voting early. All this information is available on the website, lancynvotes.com, or call our office at 483-4135. For those of you who want to vote at home, you must submit a request to receive a ballot, and you can return the application, we mail to, we mail to every voter, or you can complete that online or fax it in. You can save the postage and drop it off at any of our 15 secure drop boxes, which is at every community center, fire station, and locations across the city. So you can put your ballots in there, but you also could put your applications in there, and that way, as we're hearing about the post office is slowing mail, we can circumvent the post office, you can drop it off anywhere, those 15 locations across the city. Of course, voters have always the option to vote on Election Day. Polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and we'll be following the Health Department's best practices of social distance and cleaning to avoid spreading COVID-19. The City Hall and South Washington Election Unit is open during regular business hours, as well as extended on Wednesdays and weekends at the South Washington location. So that is an excellent time for early voting, to allow for one-stop, in-person voting up until 4:00 PM that Monday before the election. So who knows what the weather will be on Election Day? When the weather's nice this week, come on down and vote early, and you already have taken care of that. We're on the ground floor of 2500 South Washington, free parking, we have a 24-hour secure dropbox, and it's located on Cata Route 2. On Saturday, October 30th, from 1:00 until 6:00, we're going to have a special Halloween activity-themed event to promote voting participation and citizen engagement with Souls to the Polls, Trunk or Treat 2021, in partnership with organizations like the NAACP, the Lincoln Women Voters, and others. The South Washington Election Unit parking lot will be transformed into a drive-through, trick-or-treating experience. The public is invited to drive through in their cars and receive candy and fun items, socially distanced and safe. We also have a voting for all ages on a special mock Halloween special election with real tabulators, voting for their favorite Halloween character, favorite candy, and the controversial proposal on whether you should limit candy intake on October 31st. So check that out on Saturday, October 30th, from 1:00 until 6:00 for Trunk or Treat. Thank you for that long comments.
No problem. Back to you.
Okay, so we have community event announcements? You have any community events? Yeah? Are there coming up?
Just a reminder that the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery's annual 5K Run-Walk inside Mount Hope Cemetery is this Saturday at 10:00. Registration fee is $25. You can sign up and register online at runsignup.com, or you can sign up the morning of the race. Anticipated weather is in the 50s and sunny. Should be a perfect day to get out, enjoy some fresh air, sunshine, fall colors, and the cemetery spookiness. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next we are to speaker registration, public comment, legislative matter. You have a minute left to complete the blue sheet. We'll be speaking on items 3 through 14. Actually, I take that back. Items 4 through 18, which includes the Arts and Culture Commission ordinance, ordinance for deduction. Then we're next to mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Hussein, we are actively involved in a fire chief search right now, so that is active, and I'm happy to have Linda brief you, although I believe it's, we're going up to candidates right now. In terms of the code, and I wasn't prepared for this, but I'll give you what I recall, it's my understanding that as of, technically as of right now, all four are filled in terms of premise. We've got four premises, and we've got one corridor. Now, the caveat is, we've lost a few in rental inspection, like you said, so we've got two premises that are working out of class in rental inspection, and what's been happening is our, we lose rental inspection inspectors, mostly to other communities or wherever, and our premise employees, they want the rental inspection jobs because they make more money, and they, you know, they're a higher-class job. So we tend to fill the rental inspection inspectors with premise, because they, we do internal postings first, and then we have spots open in premise. So we do have four, we have, our corridor is filled, and he is as active. Two of our premises are acting out of class, and I believe we just, we were just told that our third is departing, so we are posting those. Now, we have to actually get people to apply, and they have to be ready to come in. I know our HR is looking at the qualifications for premise to see if there are things that we can change, if there are anything that they don't necessarily, you know, need to be qualified for, but the reality is a lot of them end up doing rental work, so we want them qualified for that also. So they will be posting very, very shortly for that. We've just seen a lot of, a lot of shift in employees leaving in that department, and, you know, we're going to look at a whole variety of things, I think, over the next year. We have to look at pay, we have to look at, are we competitive, you know, with salary with other communities, you know, where, we're going to look at all of that. So HR is doing their best to post and fill those, just like we're doing in a whole variety of other areas. Our HR is frankly overwhelmed because of the number of turnover here, like everywhere else, so they are being posted, and then they will be filled. So they'll be filled as soon as we get the candidates. Outside of that, I had a few other things. We haven't had a council meeting since the budget passed, so I think you all are familiar, but we did very well on the state budget. $2 million for Performing Arts Center to Lansing, $75,000 for cold cases, $1 million for cameras and policing, 1.3 million for a bridge. The McLaren property did very well, getting money for behavioral health and getting money for the child and family charities, both which will go into the Green Lawn campus, which is good news, and we got some dollars that are going to go to our child savings accounts, so that also is good news. We did very well on the state budget. So I'll give a big thank you to Senator Hertel, Representative Sarah Anthony, Representative Kara Hope, Representative Angela Whitwer, all who dove in for Lansing, and I greatly appreciate it. They did a great job for us. I want to acknowledge the West Side community, we did it, and also Delisa Fontaine and our Neighborhoods folks, they did a tremendous job with a bulk cleanup. If you were over at Let's last weekend, you saw these trash containers that were overflowing, people putting their excess trash in there, and we were able to help them out with the bulk cleanup, so that's great. I want to thank Pastor Brown and Chief Sosby in our Community Service Unit at LPD. They did a Faith in Blue event over the weekend, which was very well attended, so I appreciate that. Great job by the Chamber for their grub crawl, anybody who was downtown for the grub crawl, that was a whole lot of fun. We do have a few events coming up. Councilman Hussein already mentioned the art installation, which I am very excited for. We have been looking forward to that for some time now, so we're looking forward to the art installation at the town square. We have a Neighborhood Resource Summit on November 4th at Wood Creek Montessori, so everyone in the Third Ward, please come to the Neighborhood Resource Summit, which runs from 6:00 to 8:00. And then, two other things quickly, we have our Neighborhood Programs and Grant Applications open on Friday, October 22nd, both online and in person, so anybody who knows organizations out there who can use some Neighborhood programs and grant funding, that would be great, community associations, civic organizations, neighborhood associations. And finally, I want to let everyone know, we put this up on social media, the city of Lansing now has a specific website for grants. Anytime you say, hey, I'm looking for a grant, you may, you know, as a council member, as the mayor, public may say, well, we've got facade, and we've got HRCS grants, and we've got, we've got grants through our economic development. We have a ton of different grants, but nowhere did we have those centralized. We now do. So if you go to lansingmi.gov/... We now do. So if you go to lansingmi.gov/grants, um, that has a, a list of all of our grants. We also included some of the temporary ones, the, the CERA grants, which were rental housing assistance grants. So we are very excited, um, we are very excited to, um, to have those online. Um, that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to round out, we're going to go with, we have a few appointments to make this evening, so we'll let those folks do that this evening and, and move them on. Uh, the first one is the appointment of Cordelia Black as an at-large member of the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2022. And for that, I'll recognize the Chair of our City Operations Committee, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you very much. Is she here today?
She is here, yes.
Hello, welcome. All right. So we were very excited to move this forward to the council. We have an extremely qualified candidate here with a lot of experience, and very much looking forward to not only bringing her community experience to the board, but also her racial equity, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion background to the board. So I hereby move the appointment.
Thank you. That is a proper motion. Is there any discussion on the, the motion? Miss Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I just want to publicly state my support for Ms. Black. I've known her. I don't want to date her or I, but back in the late 90s in my middle school, she was the security guard at the White Rich, and she was always very compassionate and friendly, and still took care of business. So I'm looking forward to her joining the forces. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. I too would like to recognize this is an excellent appointment from the mayor. Uh, Ms. Cordelia, you are, uh, I got to know you when I served on the school board, and there is nobody I can think of that is more passionate about the kids in our community and equity for those kids, and I'm really excited to have you drive the work of the HRCS board. So seeing no further questions, I will ask for those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Uh, Cordelia, if you want to join us down in the well, our city clerk will swear you in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and will faithfully discharge the duties of office of Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board Member according to the best of your ability.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
While we're at it, uh, the next item we have is coming from the Public Safety Committee. It's an appointment for Andrew Abud as an at-large member of the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. I call on the Chair of that committee, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us is an appointment of Andrew Abud, at-large member of the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. We met with Mr. Abud at our last Public Safety Committee meeting. Uh, he has 30 years' experience regarding police and citizens of Lansing. We asked a series of questions, one being, uh, would he be willing to recuse himself? He said, uh, he would not put himself in the position of conflict that would, and would recuse himself if necessary. Uh, he does do a lot of police misconduct cases, maybe potential drunk driving. Mr. Abud, uh, said he is pro-police, uh, personally been in situations that required the need for help, call 911. He continued that the police are trained to be professional. They dot the i's, cross the t's. Despite him being a defense attorney, they're all on the same side of, to administer justice. Uh, he also said that, uh, he's open to more community policing, the question I asked him. But with that, I would, uh, move the resolution for the appointment of Mr. Abud for the Police Board of Commissioners.
That is a proper motion. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Abud, if you want to join us down in the well, the clerk will swear you in.
No applause?
Yeah. All right.
Here, here.
I'm sorry. I got carried away.
All right, very good. You saw how it's done. Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan. You know, faithfully discharge the duties of office of Board of Police Commissioners Member according to the best of your ability.
I do.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, moving along. Uh, this evening at the Committee of the Whole, we took it a resolution to appoint Matt, uh, Dusty Horwitz as an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light for a term to expire June 30th, 2023. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So as stated by our President, we did have Mr. Horwitz in earlier tonight. Um, he, uh, really was thorough in his application, and even more thorough in his interview. It was quite impressive. Uh, he currently lives in the 1st Ward. He moved to the city in 2020 from Washington, D.C. After his wife took a job with Michigan State, so we're glad to have him here. Uh, he has worked for environmental nonprofit organizations for nearly two decades. I think he referenced 15 years of service, uh, earlier tonight. Uh, the focus, um, over the, the 15 years of service is really on protecting people from greenhouse gas emissions and other pollutions, uh, related to oil and gas drilling, metal mining, bioenergy, and nuclear waste. Um, this is in addition to, of course, some work he referenced tonight, um, that he was engaged in on Capitol Hill. Um, he has been an attorney, a reporter, a deputy press secretary, uh, and he's testified, uh, on environmental issues before government panels, including the U.S. House of Representatives Committee on Natural Resources and the U.S. Senate Committee on Energy and Natural Resources. Uh, in addition to several other notable achievements in the field of environmentalism, he stated that he would like to join the Board to provide additional oversight and to help guide the Board of Water and Light in its effort to reduce pollution, uh, particularly greenhouse gas emissions and water contaminants while keeping utilities affordable for everyone. He did note in both his, uh, application and part of the interview tonight, um, that currently only one member of, uh, the Board of Commissioners, and that's a, a non-voting member of the Board of Commissioners, Douglas Jester, sorry, has a professional background in environmental protection, and that he would add to the Board a voting voice with professional experience in environmental protection. Um, he, there was some support tonight, uh, from some of our local environmentalists for this particular appointment, which we were glad to see. Uh, there were a number of committee que, uh, questions. I think the bottom line, however, is we have somebody that is environmentally focused, that understands he needs to balance that, um, I think, with affordability, reliability, um, and somebody that, um, you know, I think understands the importance of a public entity that is responsible to, you know, to the public as opposed to a private entity that is responsible to shareholders. Uh, so with that said, I would move the, uh, resolution.
Thank you. That is a proper motion. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. Again, I just want to publicly support his appointment. Dusty explained, and he has the training, experience, and education that's directly related to, um, the job of a commissioner in Board of Water and Light, and I'm excited that he's on there. So thank you for serving.
Thank you, yes. And I'd also like to, uh, thank the mayor for this appointment. I think we've, we've had a lot of dialogue on what the Board needs to have in terms of voices around that table, and it seems like that's been heard, so we appreciate the appointment. And with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Mrs. Rochison, we ask that you please refrain from outbursts or demonstrations in the council. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Horwitz, if you'd like to join the clerk in the well to be sworn in, we appreciate that.
All right, you saw how it's done there. Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and will faithfully discharge the duties of office of Board and Water and Light Member according to the best of your ability.
I do.
All right. Congratulations.
All right, I'm just going to verify. We do not have Ayanna Neill or Jaclyn Straub in the audience. Is that correct? I guess I, if you are there, say yes. I don't think you can say no if you're not. All right, cool. We will move back. Next up is public comment, and I can't do that without the clerk, so. Jim won't let me. I do want to just recognize two. Uh, Greg Losch from MDOT is here for the public hearing on the noise permit for 496. Um, so he will be prepared to respond to any comments that are made about the noise waiver during the special, the public hearing on that issue, so.
All right, so we are the Public Comment on Legislative Matters. Legislative Matters consists of the following items on the agenda. Items 4 through 18, which includes the Arts and Culture Commission ordinance, the ordinance for introduction regarding the Form-Based zoning code, and the public hearing on the noise special permit for MDOT to allow for the I-496 freeway reconstruction on weekdays from 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. and anytime on weekends or holidays for a period from January 24th, 2022, through December 1st, 2022, and for the period of March 1, 2023, through November 15, 2023. And we have, uh, received email from Mary Tosic, which you have all received, and I put into the permanent record regarding that. Will the council give an overview first, and then?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I was waiting for you to call names. Uh, first is the public hearing on the MDOT, so we will call on Councilmember Dunbar from the Chair of the Committee on Operations.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So this is a, this is a public hearing with regard to a noise ordinance waiver so that the folks, uh, can work on 496 24 hours a day, basically, so that it disrupt, it ends, um, lessens the disruption, uh, as far as traffic goes. I'm, I'm really glad that you mentioned that the email came in. So the, the way that this waiver would work is that construction would normally stop at 8:00 p.m. and restart again at 7:00 a.m. It is to, um, let MDOT work all through the night and all day on weekends and holidays. The email that we got from Mary Tosac, or Toshak, because I hope I'm not pronouncing her name incorrectly, uh, references the fact that the Cherry Hill neighborhood has townhomes directly north of, uh, one of the working areas, and that there are two apartment complexes directly south of that stretch. And she's asking for us to consider stopping that construction from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. in that section, um, where those apartments are, so that the folks there would have at least a window to sleep because they are right on top of the construction. So I'm just throwing that out there. I know this is just the public hearing. But I did want folks to know that there is one, at least concern, probably more since she wrote. So with that, I'm fine to do the?
Yep. Thank you. All right. There you go.
All right. All right. Our first speaker is Greg Losch.
Why don't we hold him?
Okay.
Greg, uh, we're going to hold you and make, and see if there's others that have comments on it before we bring you up. Thank you.
Okay. Then the other is Loretta Stanaway, famous from Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me.
Infamous.
Well, don't tell me I'm going to give you guys a compliment. Uh, several of us, myself included, brought to your attention several different times in the last several months that there needed to be some accommodation made for people who could not attend physically, and we were looking for a virtual way to continue comments from those folks once the meetings stopped being virtual. So I see you have worked on that. You have done a good job. I think it's a good, uh, draft of a proposal. I would like to make a couple of comments, though. Uh, one is that I think there's a category of people that got left out. There are folks who, whether it's family or friends, do caregiving for these folks who would be exempt and be allowed to participate remotely. And I think those folks need to also be included in this as an option for them to do a virtual comment because they're not in a capacity to leave their caregiving role and come down here and speak. So I think you need to give that some consideration. Also, um, my understanding of the intent of the Open Meeting Act is to pursue a tendency towards openness for transparency, for participation. And so I would encourage you to do everything that accommodates those goals and to look at this, uh, to removing the sunset clause on that. There's nothing that I can see that would indicate it be in favor of those goals being reached by stopping the opportunity for people to participate remotely as of a certain date and time, COVID or no COVID. So if the law allows you to make those changes, I would strongly encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Our next and final speaker is Greg Losch with, uh, MDOT.
Thank you. I was just going to be here tonight with my colleague, Chris Gemble, from the Michigan Department of Transportation, representing our, our project. If there were comments from the public, or comments from council, or the mayor, I wanted to be here in person to hear them. So that's, that's really the reason we're here tonight. So if there's any questions regarding the project or comments that we would like, you'd like us to address, we can do that.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes public comment.
So when we go to the referrals, it looks like Kathy got questions.
Okay, so referrals of public hearing.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. I was just going to ask, while you're here, what the response might be from MDOT to the concern that was raised by the residents of the two housing complexes on either side of one section of that recon, reconstruction.
So that, that may depend a little bit. We're still going through the contract process with our contractor. Um, we had the letting on September 17th. We're still working towards having a contract with the contractor that's going to be doing the work. And they have not raised any concerns with the noise ordinance waiver language that we have in our contract that matches what is on the permit you are looking at tonight. Um, but if there are special accommodations, we can work with them to, to talk about what that does to our schedule. Because what we're, what we're trying to do with the language in that waiver is to kind of thread that needle of being aware of the noise impacts to the residents along the project, but giving the contractor enough window to work so that our schedule gets it done as quickly as possible, so we're in and out as, as fast as we can be. So that's really, we would really need to look at the specific locations and to see what type of noises they may actually be impacted by. The, the freeway work itself, with the exception of some of the bridges, is, is down lower from those homes, right? So it's, it's down. There's still going to be some noise. But my guess is, to be perfectly honest, backup alarms are going to be the majority of what a lot of people hear, and we can't do a lot about those because it's a safety requirement. But, uh, at the end of the day, we are going to limit a lot of the large and loud noises to two days a week and off time so that they don't impact residents. Some, like the, the demolition of bridges, pavement breaking. We have those listed out there that the contractor can only do those for certain periods of time throughout, uh, uh, two days a week. So that's really our goal there, to try to limit that.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Garza, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. So my understanding, you know, I work in the construction field, and, you know, I'd like you to take this suggestion if that's, in fact, the problem is the backup alarms, is my understanding is if you have somebody, a spotter, guiding somebody to back up, you can disable those backup alarms.
Okay. But that's something we can definitely take back to our, our OSHA, um, representatives at MDOT and, and talk about what that, what that would do for us. Yep.
Thank you for being here this evening, and this will be back at the Committee on Operations next Wednesday at 3:30, correct? Yes. Uh, if you want to join us, then you're welcome to. Thank you. Uh, speaking of referrals, Mr. Clerk.
All right, so we have the, what, you already said what committee then?
Committee of Operations.
Operations, okay. Then we are to ordinance for passage. Uh, there's an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinance by adding Chapter 266, Section 266.01 through 266.03 to establish the Arts and Culture Commission, and then for the City of Lansing, including membership duties and meetings. As read second time by this title, the ordinance was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on order of immediate passage.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So this ordinance would create a, essentially a 12-member, um, arts commission that would make recommendations on and advise on, uh, all issues pertaining to arts in the City of Lansing. Uh, it would consist of, or be comprised of, eight, uh, at-large members, four ward representatives. Uh, there's been quite a bit of public vetting, um, on this. We actually had the co-chair of the Mayor's Arts and Cultures Commission, uh, Mr. Mike Marriott, in on September 13th. We had, so I, I thought, a really good discussion regarding the need for this particular commission. And we had a public hearing on September 20th. We have received some letters, uh, in support of, uh, we've received a little bit of, of public input, uh, inputs as part of these meetings. A variety of that input has been quite sparse, candidly. Um, but with that being said, um, again, we are at the, the tail end of this process, and I would move the, um, the ordinance.
That is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzey? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item is our consent agenda. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. I would move the consent agenda as presented. It does include a joint reappointment for Ayanna Neal and Jacqueline Straub to the Inglewood County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board, grant acceptance for Project Safe Neighbor Grant for the Lansing Police Department to distribute two-hundred-and-twenty-five backpacks to the Lansing Youth Football League, grant acceptance, this is U.S. Geological Survey Grant for installing a steam gauge on Sycamore Creek, setting a show cause hearing in consideration of orders to make safe or demolish to the owners of the property located at four-one-zero-eight Deerfield Avenue, as well as a claim appeal, claim number eighteen-twenty-one for Sunset Realty LLC, in the amount of one-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars in trash fees. And this is for the property located at seven-zero-five Princeton Avenue.
All those in favor, would you like to remove something?
I just wanted to ask if anyone was here from Sunset Realty about that Princeton Avenue before, because I would pull it if they were. If not, I'm going to keep it on.
Is anyone here from Sunset?
Not me.
Keep it on consent.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we are to resolutions for action.
The first one is in order to make safe or demolish to the owners of property located at forty-five-eleven South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So like you said, what we have before us is make safe or demolish for the property located at forty-five-eleven South Martin Luther King Boulevard. The original red tag on this property was twelve-seven of two thousand and eighteen. The SEV value is twenty-eight thousand two hundred, land value being at twelve thousand seventeen, and the building value at forty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-seven, with estimated cost of repairs of sixty-one thousand five hundred and forty-four. This property has been the site of many illegal dumpings. It's been going on the tax roll. From my understanding, Mr. Sanford stated that the office sent out plenty of notices, and the owners live either in North or South Carolina, and they buy properties and flip them. His office has had no contact with them. Basement has been full of water at one point. It's not a fire damaged prop, uh, property, so they request a sixty days make safe or demolish. And I'm not sure if anybody's here to speak on that property, and if not, I would move the resolution.
That is a proper motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Spitzley.
And I might, I might be wrong. I was just, I, I thought I, I saw a news article where, um, oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw a news article where some folks from the land bank were at this address doing some cleanup. Is that not true? Maybe that's a different Martin Luther King address.
I couldn't speak to the news articles you've read.
Well, I would just, if, if that was the case, I'd be, I'd be wondering why we were making safe. But I, I may be mistaken. I apologize.
No worries. Okay. I think we're good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is donation acceptance for the Lansing Police Department Special Tactics and Rescue Team in honor of retired Detective Ronald Seka to upgrade the Eunice Ballistic Shields. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So Detective Ronald Seka, he is now deceased. Unfortunately, he lost his battle with cancer in two thousand and twenty. He had really, you know, just a stellar career with special operations, specifically our start team. And in the event, after he passed, his family, along with a family friend named Mr. Chaz King, started a memorial golf outing in his honor. The first year, they were able to raise over seven thousand dollars, and they actually donated that to the, to the city of Lansing. This year, they have their second annual outing, and that actually resulted in a donation to the city of Lansing in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. Combining that with another grant that we received in mid-July, twenty-five hundred dollars from, and let me make sure I'm saying this right, yes, Modern Woodmen of America, what we are being asked to do tonight is to accept these funds so that they can be used to upgrade the, the start team's ballistic shields, essentially. So what they want to do is upgrade from three A, level three A to level three. And essentially, what that means is that these shields would not only shield officers from handgun fire, but also some fire from rifles as well. So in addition to the handguns. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
It's a proper motion. All those in favor, please, uh, sorry, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the procedures for hosting virtual meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. This is something we discussed in Cow. Mr. Vice President, do you want to do it, or do you want me to?
I will move it, and then if you want to discuss it. Is that fine?
Yep.
Okay. So I will move the resolution.
Proper motion has been made. As we discussed in the Committee of the Whole, this is a resolution that allows for the virtual, virtual participation of city council members and city council committees and city council and committee of the whole in the event that they are medically unable to attend or would be at risk by attending a public meeting because of a medical condition. It does have a sunset on it, because state law has a sunset on virtual participation for members of a public body. So with that being said, I would ask for any further discussion? Got a few. Councilmember Garza, and then Betts.
Thank you, Council President. So if, if, let's say a council member is ill and they can't make it, is that the only opportunity for the public to be virtual as well?
The public would not be virtual under this resolution. It's for the member to participate virtually. That's what the OMA would allow us for in that situation. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Councilmember Garza. He, he asked the same question, or he asked the same question. I just wanted to clarify, though, because it looks like under the new resolution, we would be posting the link on the agenda that goes out publicly. Is that correct?
We would be posting that mem, which members are participating.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yep. To let the public know who will be in the room, well, who's expected in the room and who's not. Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. So this is not, this is not opening up a Zoom for anything?
No.
It is basically, we're going to have a screen down, we're going to have somebody broadcast. It's letting folks know that would come in the audience or watch at home, that we're going to have somebody.
Correct. Yeah, that somebody won't be, won't be in the room, but they are still participating. Yep. No worries. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. We are to ordinance for introduction. I'll read the record, the ordinance into the record. An ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to repeal and replace the existing zoning ordinance, the map being Part twelve, Title six, of the Lansing Codified Ordinance in its entirety, except for Chapter thirteen-hundred, the marijuana operations with a form-based code and zoning map. The ordinance was introduced by the Committee of the Whole and read it first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So the zoning ordinance that the clerk referenced was a, you know, plus forty-year, essentially, zoning ordinance. We replaced that earlier this year, I believe it was March of two thousand, I'm sorry, of this year, with form-based code. In any event, we had some folks from Economic Development and Planning in tonight. We had Brian McGrane, we had Susan Statuick, and Andy Fiedewa to discuss essentially just some amendments that needed to be made to form-based code as passed by this body earlier this year. They, they wanted, they really kind of, I think, worked to underscore the fact that it really didn't change the spirit of our zoning code, but that certain things were needed to, to kind of make sure that there wasn't as much ambiguity. There were some, as an example, definitions that were either left out, or some definitions that needed to be amended. There were some requirements in there that were really counterproductive when we're looking at development and things of that nature. There were issues referenced earlier regarding food trucks and requirements regarding, you know, kind of this protection of the public right of way, and, and making sure that there are an appropriate number of trash receptacles, and the list goes on. So again, not necessarily a changing of the spirit, but making sure that we're making very clear, you know, what the requirements are for folks, making sure that we're getting rid of ambiguity. And then there were also some, some changes to the zoning maps. There were several properties that had been omitted, essentially, meaning that they weren't given zoning designations. And then there were some properties that were given incorrect zoning designations based on what they had been zoned under our, our prior zoning ordinance. So with that being said, we have, should this be approved, the public hearing would be, I believe it's November eighth, seven PM, in the council chambers. So with that said, I would move the resolution.
There's proper motion. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city-related matters. For anyone who would like to speak on city government-related matters, you have about one more minute to complete the yellow form that's in the, in the back, if you and I have already done so. Next, we are to reports of city officer boards and commissions, communications, petitions, and other city-related matters.
Vice President.
I would move that. Are we to that point?
We are.
Okay. Thank you. I would move that all items be considered as read in full, and appropriate referrals be made by you.
It's proper motion. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk.
All right. Item City Clerk. We have minutes of boards and commission placed on file.
Minutes, uh, yes, that's right, placed on file.
City council meeting scheduled for twenty twenty-two.
The Committee of the Whole.
City Lansing, City Lansing Ward Purishment Plan.
Committee of the Whole.
Item, the mayor, grant acceptance, domestic violence services for the Capitol area response effort program grant.
This and the next four to the Ways and Means Committee.
Does that mean I have to read them off?
Nope.
Sweet. Grant acceptance, Michigan State Housing Development Authority Neighborhood Stabilization Program Income Grant.
Ways and Means.
We have traffic control order number twenty-one nineteen, twenty-one twenty, regulate parking along Haverhill Drive and Winterset Drive.
Items twenty-seven through thirty-one of the Committee on Public Safety.
Appropriation acceptance, state of Michigan fund for staffing Lansing Police Department Cold Case Unit, and for the purchase and installation of security cameras and other public safety improvements.
Committee on Ways and Means.
Appointment of John Shasky as a member of the Saginaw Street Quarter, proven authority for term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Committee on Development and Planning.
We have the appointment of Elizabeth Alire as Chief Labor Negotiator.
Committee of the Whole.
And we have affidavit and disclosure from Katrina Urista from Human Relations Committee Service Department.
Ethics Board.
And we have fiscal year twenty twenty-one, board and water light audited financial statements.
Committee of the Whole.
Next is excuse absences.
We have a motion to excuse Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Spitzley. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. We have remarks by the council members.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to clear up, when I talked about the property on Martin Luther King, I wanted to clear up that the property in question that was being worked on by the land bank and, and Mr. Schertz, and he was at seven forty-four North Martin Luther King. I didn't want to, I didn't want to cause any confusion or, or have Eric call me tomorrow. So I just want to, want to, want to clear that up. The other thing I wanted to do is, I want, I did want to thank Senator Hurtel, Representative Ann, Anthony, and the mayor for the seventy-five thousand dollars toward cold cases. And, you know, anybody who knows me knows that I've been, you know, really advocating for an increase in dollars and funding and resources for the Lansing Police Department to address cold cases. We have a number of, you know, unsolved homicides and other violent acts in the city of Lansing, and, and the relatives and the loved ones really need closure. And so I really appreciate those dollars and give you a heads up, I'm going to be squeezing seventy-five thousand more from you, but this is a good start, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for clarifying on that property, too. Appreciate that. Councilmember Dunbar?
This is just a, an administrative thing, but I noticed that when we did the packets this week, there's like two hundred pages of printout of that form-based code. Like, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out here since we're talking about the accolades of the environmental community finally getting on the board of water and light, that maybe since a lot of folks have computers up here anyway, that we don't print a packet that's like that thick.
Well, yeah, no, that's great. I know Sherri checks at the beginning of the year who wants printed packets and who wants computer packets, and most of us, I think, are paperless still.
Okay.
So if, we need to make a change for your packet, let me know.
Yeah. I just don't want to have that much paper wasted.
Sure. Yeah, no, absolutely. Okay. Any others? I have just something, too. I wanted to, without detracting from the fact that today is National Indigenous Peoples' Day, I also want to recognize that today is National Coming Out Day, a day that was commemorated in nineteen eighty-eight to celebrate the nineteen eighty-seven march on Washington for gay and lesbian rights. It's three decades later, and it's turned into an annual celebration to acknowledge LGBTQ people and to raise awareness for the ongoing fight for equality. I myself came out in two thousand and eight, and I've been very fortunate to have many people in my life who've been supportive. Not everyone is in that situation or that far along on their journey. So today is a day to celebrate each member of the LGBTQ-plus community and their story. So I just wanted to recognize that tonight at city council, because we're getting done early, so we might as well have some good news, too. So, thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Next, we are remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I just want to, I just want to thank you all for supporting the, the new Arts Board. You all did some really good work on that. I'm really excited for that. It shows that Lansing really is a creative town. We value art, we value culture, and I'm excited for that board. I'm going to start working on appointments as soon as possible. I already heard from the chairs, they're aware, they're watching, and, and we're going to get some good people on that board, but I do think that'll be really important for our vibrancy moving forward for the city, for the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk.
Okay. We're the public comment now on city government-related matters. Remember that you have three minutes to speak on any city-related matter. And our first speaker is Cole Folk, and followed by Belinda Fitzpatrick.
Good evening to council and council president Spatafor, and others in attendance. I've lived in greater Lansing for forty years. I've lived in my home in the Westside Council for twenty-three years. In this house, I don't believe I've come to speak before you as a council more than two or three times. I don't really want to be here tonight. While there have been issues of importance to me, which I do reach out on assist, for assistance from each of you from time to time, I don't think that I've ever really asked that much, with the possible exception of councilperson Wood. The, I'm periodically expressing my positions on city matters, and sometimes strongly. I certainly don't believe I ask that much from you, but I do have expectations of you as city council members. Among all of the important things that you must stay aware of and stay on top of, I hope that acknowledging and responding to inquiries of your constituents, and in a timely manner, is at the top of your list. It is with this in mind, President Spatafor, that I come here this evening, though, as I said, I sincerely wish I did not. President Spatafor, you are an elected at-large council member, and that means you have a lot of ground to cover. I understand that. You were elected by your colleagues as president on, on top of that, and good for you. Seriously. You are now in the process of asking the people of Lansing to reelect you, and therein lies the rub for me. This is where I'm struggling. I reached out to you via email on July twenty-six about a neighborhood code compliance matter.[1635.25] you via email on July 26th about a neighborhood code compliance matter. I had tried other approaches to resolve it and was getting nowhere. It involved a rental property and the codes and rules of which I'd never had a reason to become familiar with before. Today is October 11th. Sir, I tried my level best to communicate with you in writing, one-on-one, but now I've had to come here. I would like to quickly recap our conversations. I emailed you on the 26th telling you that I had a matter that I was trying to understand rental and landlord and tenant issues on, and I didn't understand. I followed up three times, three times I had to follow up with you to try to get you to respond. It was only two days ago, on the 6th through the 8th, that I got information from you finally to my original request. I went from July 26th to October 6th before I received any bit of information from you. Besides saying that you missed seeing my first email, which does happen, I don't know what took so long. Maybe the department heads didn't respond to you timely. You have said that you were ill for a while, and I sincerely hope that is behind you. I know that you had some vacations on Facebook, and we all deserve that. Good for you. Maybe you need a more robust tickler file. I don't know. But you asked the people of Lansing across all of Lansing to place their trust in you as the leader, and we did. And I say we did because I voted for you. The absence of a response comes across as an ignored inquiry. Acknowledging and responding them in a timely manner is your obligation to us as residents. This is Leadership 101. If you're reelected, and I suspect you will be, I hope you'll model this most fundamental responsibility much better in your next term, and I kindly ask that of all of you. And Mayor, I want to thank you for your walk in the neighborhood a couple weeks ago, where you at least connected me with Lansing Connect as a solution to the situation, and I have now availed myself to that. Thank you. God bless and good night.
Next is Belinda Philpatricks, followed by Eric Crossley.
Belinda Fitzpatrick. Now, I'm homeless. I have no address because your city decided to red-tag my house. I've done this rodeo before. I wanted to give you this post office box because I noticed my mail wasn't coming. And the lady at the post office, she told me the post office does not deliver mail to red-tagged houses. And I've seen in the past where the city has red-tagged a house and then sent mail to the house, and I don't want to miss anything. And I came down here partly to make a public record. And also, I don't like talking to these code compliance people. I, I just don't, I guess I don't trust them. I guess it's the best thing to say, you know? So this is the address, if somebody could forward it, get it from me and forward it over to code compliance. And let's see, I think I said, oh, so the post office now, they told me that forwarding is taking four to six weeks. Okay. I would like to recommend that there be a moratorium on red tagging houses for the duration of this pandemic. I'm diabetic, and I'm not going to go into a shelter. I'm not going to sleep under a bridge, but I'm not going to go into a shelter. I would be much safer staying in my own house, okay? Just because your code officer doesn't like my housekeeping. There's areas that are clean, there's areas that aren't clean. There's no reason to put me out on the street. You know, I have tomatoes that are rotting in my garden that I usually stew and can to manage my, my blood sugar. That's why I haven't been around much. I want to say I'm going to vote for Kathy because her values reflect mine more. I don't like the direction that the city's going. I don't want my property values to go up. I'm not a speculator. I didn't buy my house as an investment to buy and sell. I've been there since 94. And I was impressed that she cares about, you know, keeping the land so it can grow food. I don't like these, these developments that are going up everywhere. We're losing our, our parks.
Thank you. Now we have Eric Crossley, followed by Nick Zandi.
Good evening, the council president, council members. I didn't know it was LGBT Day. I'm LGBT. I'm post-transgendered. If you want to know what that means, please talk to me sometime. No, I had an experience beginning in August, or beginning in July, actually. I forgot to make a payment on my blue billie with a black top, you know, $25, great price. $25 for three months, great price. But I marked on my little envelope here, oh, you got to pay by July 30th. So I did, but I made the mistake of paying at 5:17 PM on July 30th. It happened to be a line here that says, full payment must be made by no later than 3:00 PM. That's my complaint. Why in the hell is there a 3:00 PM there? Doesn't make sense. I made the payment two hours and 17 minutes late. I paid the $35. I read a couple poems to Cheryl Lynn. She was a very nice payment taker. I said, listen, you sick my $35, I'm not going to pay 70. That was already, she knew, 70 already, two and two hours after that 3:00, 3 o'clock thing there. And so I read a couple poems. I said, I'll give me a chance to talk to somebody, see if I can get a break, you know, 35 more dollars for being two hours and 17 minutes late. And I hid my blue billie the first time, you know, in August, out back by my house. And I hid it the second time, got back in town the 19th, and it was gone. I hid it. Somebody really motivated that collector to look at all my property, come on and find it and take it, you know? So I ended up talking to Mayor Shores, a citizen advocate, but after two weeks, his hands were tied. I said, who tied your hands? He wouldn't tell me. That's okay. But then, I got ahold of my city council member, Mr. Bets. And I want to praise him in your presence. I know Mr. Bets has had some colorful events happening to him and in the city. He's on the, I just want to say, he's helping me greatly, and I appreciate it so much. The citizen advocate didn't do anything. He didn't advocate for this, this citizen. But my council member is doing a good job, and I want to praise him for that. We'll resolve this. No big deal. Thank you. But I'd like to see that 3:00 PM thing changed. It's absurd. It's just to catch people. The City of Lansing shouldn't be into catching people. Serving people would be cool. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have Nick Zandi, followed by our last speaker, Larry Hutchinson.
Hello, everyone. You may or may not know me. I wish to speak here on the bound, on the ward boundaries being rearranged. I know that's probably going to be spoken about on future council meetings. I've, as someone who works for the city clerk's office as an election inspector, I believe that many people need to have their voices heard. However, I have an issue with the wards at this point. And that is, we only have four wards, and I don't think that's efficient enough to truly represent people. As you've heard from many people in, who have previously spoken, they feel that they're not truly represented. And I think that it, the at-large positions might have caused this because three of the four at-large members live in the fourth ward, and so they get represented, while all the other wards, not truly represented. I think that at-large positions should probably be done away with, and that we should consider adding wards, probably up to eight. That is, because we're already going through ward boundary changes at this moment, we should consider something like that because of the uneven population distribution of some of the wards. That's all I want to say right now, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Last speaker is Larry Hutchinson.
Somebody's minutes. Can I have his minutes too? Might as well. Well, I'm Larry Hutchinson, candidate for governor of Michigan in '22. Also co-chairperson of the Green Party. Joined the Green Party today. A couple of housekeeping notes. On October 30th, my kindergarten classmate, we ate graham crackers, drunk milk, took naps, and learned our ABCs together. I read Dorsey from the Davidson family. They're going to have a versus in Flint, Michigan at the old IMA stadium, which is now the Dort Federal Stadium. And everybody join the Green Party. Now, I have, I, I just have to continue to bring this up. Because as a person who had, who was molested as a child, I know what a rape feels like. So I can say that what happened in this article was a rape. And the fact that I got banned from the debate, they will say, Mr. Hutchinson will not participate, is not going to participate in the debate. No, you banned me. You tried to culture counsel me like you did, like you're trying to do Dave Chappelle. Dave Chappelle said, you know what, if this would, if this what it's like to feel to be canceled, I love it. So I love it, and I relish it. And here, this, I keep bringing the council's attention to this little box here. Excuse me. Oh, I can take this off now. City Pulse published it to help educate voters about the candidates. And then, in a couple more sentences, a couple more sentences, you say, we're banning him. I was at Ice Cream Social with the mayor, the councilwomen here, all the candidates except for one, Ms. Melissa. None of them, no one there found me threatening. I asked each one of them, what did I say in the, in that article? Did you find it threatening? Ms. Melissa said it on, she said it on WLS when we debated. Mr. Omar, he didn't like it because he felt that they put three candidates over here and three candidates over here like we were less than. And I've been, okay, I'm going to need more time, and I'm going to request more time from the council.
Sorry, so the limit is three minutes?
But I can request more time, can I? Yes, I can.
You can request it.
The council agrees. There's a timeout period, and the council can agree to give me more time. Another minute, at least, 30 seconds.
It's the determination of the chair that an extension of time will not be granted. That concludes public comment. With no further business for the committee, council, we are adjourned.